I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, May 22, 2017, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hohman, there were a few items in the table file.
Yes, in the table file you have an additional report from me regarding a proposed music staffing increase at Northfield Middle School. And of course, this time of year, a number of personnel items, including appointments, decrease, change in assignments, a few resignations, and a leave of absence.
And there's the overnight trips.
And the overnight trips piece, yes, as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, May 8, 2017. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Luke by Margaret, is there a second? Second by Amy. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, May 8, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hohman?
Yes, this evening I've got high school business teacher Julie Warner shared with us that her accounting students test results from a career technical education endorsed national standardized accounting test that focused on the accounting one content. And she was very pleased to report to us that 75% of her class passed the test, and that required a passage rate of 70% or higher. And 55% of students received between an 81 and 99% score. And those scores count toward the district's technical skill assessment requirement for the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Grant. And you know, we talk a lot about data, we talk a lot about assessment results, and what I'm always appreciative is when we have students taking a nationally assigned assessment and we're seeing really quality results. So I'm really pleased that Mrs. Warner shared that with us. Again, when we think about our near-term priority of equitable support for all career and college pathways, this is an example of how, for students looking at that accounting field, we have a real good path for them right here at Northfield High School that also can get them some potential pieces down the road. So that's excellent. And then, of course, you know, this is the time of the year that if we were to do an announcement for everything that we're attending, we'd be here for 35 or so minutes. So of course, there is a plethora of other activities, including concerts and award ceremonies, the Latino and Friends Play Festival last week, and the Honors Art Gallery Reception. I've often referred affectionately to May as National Folding Chair Month. And that's exactly what it is. So I know many people at the table have been really engaged in a number of activities, and it's the crescendo of the year. So all sorts of things happening every night, and again, proud of our students and their performances on the stage, on the fields, and of course, in the classroom. So those are your announcements for this evening.
Excellent. Is there anything specific board members want to add? No? Okay. So we will move on to committee reports, which we do the second board meeting of the month, in which board members have an opportunity to report on the various committees that they serve as school board liaisons. We have two reports this evening. First, Board Member Amy Gorwitz for the District Curriculum and Staff Development Committee. Amy?
Well, I gave a pretty thorough outline on the report, so I won't go through it all. But the big thing to know is the committee is exploring the possibility of combining the District Curriculum and Staff Development Committee with the District Tech Steering Committee, because there's a lot of overlap between what they do. So I'm not sure exactly how that'll pan out, but stay tuned, and we'll see if that's a good marriage of those two groups.
Excellent. Board members have any questions about the report?
I thought it was extremely thorough, and I really appreciated it. And I think that, actually, it's Board Member Hardy's idea to introduce us to board meetings. And I see that it's playing out really well for us, because this is such a comprehensive report. I feel like I'm at those meetings. So I appreciate it. And I just wanted, what I really enjoyed seeing was some of the broader thinking about how we can be more collaborative and how we can share knowledge. And then, you know, looking back on transformational technology, you know, and it was really about learning, and to see the thought process around merging those two committees, I think, is really excellent. So thank you so much.
Okay. And the second report, Board Member Ellen Iverson regarding the District Youth Council.
Sure. So this is just a short report. We last, at the last board meeting, approved this slate of new District Youth Council members. And they actually brought the new members to this, the meeting that followed our board meeting. We did that on Monday, and they had a meeting on Wednesday. So they elected their leadership for next year. So I just thought it would be helpful for board members to see. They decided rather than having co-chairs, to have a single chair next year, and that's Ethan Schaefer. And then you can see that they have, are retaining the same committee structure, and they have committee chairs in place. And then they had a long discussion about publicity and how to best handle that. And so I think they're still thinking through that, but they're looking at the secretaries taking some of that role on, and then trying to embed publicity across. Because last year, they had it as a focus. They wanted the school to really know about District Youth Council. They feel like they've made some headway, and they're ready to really focus on publicizing some of the specifics that they're doing.
Excellent. Board members, questions or comments on that committee? It was fun to see that three of those who are now, who took on some leadership roles also, were those students who were here doing the presentations. So good to see. All right, thank you. Thanks to both of you for the report. So we'll go on to, we have a number of items for discussion and report this evening. The first is the proposed 2017-18 general fund budget. And here to present that is Val Mertstorff, Director of Finance.
Good evening. Trying not to make too much noise here. All right. I'm going to present the proposed 17-18 budget, as well as a second revision of our current 16-17 budget. There's been a significant number of changes and things happening, and I just wanted to bring that information to you, so that we are a little closer aligned at the end of the year, when we get the audit reports, and have better information going into an adopted budget. So our enrollment projections, as you've seen in your monthly reports, are still continuing to increase. I've got the, this is pretty similar to what we've seen before. For 16-17, we are projecting to end with about 4,381 adjusted pupil units, meaning the actual weighted calculation, which is what our formula revenue is driven on. And for 17-18, we're projecting just slightly higher than that, with 4,424 roughly. And that trend continues to increase for 18-19, but the model's showing it to kind of start dropping off after 19-20. But as we know, that's kind of a waiting game to see what happens, and we'll hope for the best. But right now, it's still, still looking positive. For revenue assumptions, this is specific to the 17-18 adopted. I'll talk about the revised budget when I get to the actual number slides. We are currently assuming a 1.5% increase in the basic per pupil revenue. That is the minimum that we've seen in the legislative bills that we've been following. But we will hopefully know more tonight, or in the near future, about what that will actually be. But that's what we're, we're doing, the minimum of what, what we've heard. Again, enrollment is a very large driver in that. Over 50% of our revenue is enrollment-based, so our general fund revenue, just the basic pupil, is 55% of our revenue. So that's a significant player in our total overall budget. Special education, as you will hear in a little bit, is also increasing for various reasons, which drives up both the costs. And then our revenue is also obviously not fully funded, but that does drive that up as well. And then the Cannon Valley Special Ed Cooperative, we had put an estimate in the budget initially. As that has progressed this year, we have flown, done a flow-through of more of the dollars through Northfield. And that program, as you've maybe heard, has grown significantly. So we're just increasing that to match closer to what we think the flow-through will be. And that's an even in and out. Everything that we incur will get billed directly to the co-op. For our federal programs, our, we have been the fiscal host for the Project Aware grant. We had an extension for this year, and this should be the last year of that, so that will not be reflected in the 17-18 budget. And I have a conservative decrease for the title funding, just due to the uncertainty at the federal level. We are, everything we're hearing is that we're confident in our numbers for next year, but just a conservative amount, just to be planful of that. And then our local sources, I'll talk a little bit about a potential reduction in our resale class fees. And then we are obviously seeing an increase in our interest earnings. So those are kind of the things that are playing into the overall adopted budget for So for revenue, these are the categories that I've typically presented, fairly consistent over the last several years. The Cannon Valley Co-op, as you see, will just drop off, because we'll no longer be the fiscal host effective July 1st. Our property tax budget, that's the same for the revised, for the second revised budget, slight decrease for 17-18. That was presented back in December with the Truth and Taxation. Overall, basically, holding flat on that. The state sources is obviously the vast majority of where our money comes from, and that is showing an increase. Couple different things playing into that. The special ed increase expenditures increases that, and that is a state-funded revenue. So there's an increase for that. Increased pupil units, increased basic formula, all of those things are playing into that. The increase for 16-17 is primarily special ed. I was pretty conservative with the amount that I had booked for special, or projected for special ed, because the co-op was new this year, and it was changing the way that funding was happening. And we weren't sure exactly how that was going to flow with tuition billing. After January, we got some better data, after they, MD runs their first student run in January, and picked up the EDRS numbers. So we have some better data about what that's going to look like. So that's coming in more positively than I had anticipated by about 400,000. And then our local sources actually is the increase for our interest earnings, and then our medical assistance billing has done really well this year. That's kind of an unusual timing, that revenue sources. We have a consultant that helps us manage and know what we can bill, and all the things that need to be set up. And she's worked with us on a couple of things to help recoup some more dollars. And so those kind of take a while to get into effect, because they're looking at the rates kind of 18 months behind. So, so that, I think, will be a trend that we continue to see, assuming the federal government doesn't change the way we're funded for that. So, so those are the primary changes for, for the second revision. And then for the proposed budget, fairly similar story. The state is increased because of special ed and student enrollment. Local sources was an increase to the revenue, both the medical assistance revenue and interest. The, the number in there that I want to call out is actually the proposed fee reduction. So one of the things that we have been talking about as an administrative team is barriers for students in accessing a free and appropriate public education. This, it's about $80,000 that we currently bring in. And when I do the data, it's primarily the elective classes in the middle school and high school that we would be looking at. And this would be basically not charging a fee. It's for the classes that, for fax, or the technology and engineering classes, and things where they're buying supplies, or things where there are lots of hands-on types. Art is another one that charges fees. So all of those types of classes that charge a fee to take the elective class is something that we've been talking about, removing a barrier for those students, where that's really limiting their ability to access those classes and that education, if that's something that they were truly interested in. So again, this is the proposed budget. This is obviously the first time that you're hearing about it, so certainly open to discussion about it. But it's something that, as a district, we would like to at least entertain a conversation about, and see if that's something we could move forward with. It is about, I think, .17% of our total revenue budget. But as we talked about it, the gains for those particular students who may be deterred from accessing those classes would be a pretty big benefit, so. And then the federal is the other, that's just the decline for the title and the Project Aware grant that'll be discontinuing. For expenditures, the total aggregate increase for salaries is currently estimated about 4%. That's a combination of currently settled agreements, and we're currently negotiating with the Northfield Education Association, so there's obviously an estimate for what that settlement may be. Currently, there, there is or was a half a percent increase projected for TRA, actually half a percent for the next four years, going from a district contribution of 7.5% to 9.5%. I think that's maybe been taken out. So we're, I have it in. I'd rather be conservative. If that does not go through, we'll obviously take that out for the budget that's presented for approval in June. And then we have continued to see, as I talked about with our self-insurance presentation, a continued increase in our health and dental participation, which is, which is a good thing to see, but it does, you know, cost money for the general fund. So the Cannon Valley Special Ed, again, those expenditures is coming off. Non-salary and other operational, I believe we have pretty static at a 2% just inflationary increase. And then obviously, always keeping in mind our 16% fund balance goals. So those are the things that are playing into these expenditure numbers. Again, with the second revision, there is just a handful of things that got added, primarily for salaries. The site and building saw a slight increase. There's been some staffing changes in that department that have resulted in some additional subs and things happening, so there's a additional overtime. So just accounting for that increase that we've seen this year, to make sure our revised budget is as close to actual as we think it will be. And an increase in our special education cost, primarily from the additional staffing that we've seen with the additional students. And then the proposed budget is, is pretty much mirroring the second revised budget, for the most part, with the increased salaries. It's assuming most of the staffing is held the same in those sorts of things. So I think that was all on that. So the general fund summary is kind of pulling that all together. So originally, my revised budget was projecting a spend-down of about $28,000. And I'm now projecting that will increase the fund balance about 136, again, primarily due to that special ed revenue coming in better than I had originally anticipated, and the continued increase in students. So we are projecting to end this year with 22.6% unassigned fund balance. And that is assuming that the restricted fund balance stays, stays where I have projected it. I don't anticipate it to change dramatically, but depending on how some of those restricted fund balances change, that, that does obviously change the unrestricted. And then for the proposed budget for 17-18, we are looking at about $48.8 million for revenue and $49.5 million for expenditures, so looking to spend down about 600, just shy of 679,000. This is better than the financial forecast I presented in January. I had projected, I think, like $1.5 million spend-down. So that's a positive. Still very strong fund balance, projecting to end at 21.6%. So overall, you know, that's, that's the reason we've been building up the fund balance, is so we can, can weather those and not have, have to react too quickly to any kind of, to downturn in expenditures. And I think that's all I had, so I will entertain any questions you might have.
Excellent. Thank you, Val. Questions, comments, board members have? Margaret?
I never really have questions and comments, because I have such confidence in Val, that it's like, oh, of course she's thought of this. But, so our fund balance is such that, say, what if all the kids who open enrolled suddenly weren't open enrolling anymore? How would that impact us, and how cushioned are we?
So the, our, our goal of 16% is, I think, about 8.8 million is the goal that we want to maintain. So we have 10.6, and that's 21%. So we have roughly, you know, $2.5 million above our goal to help weather that. Each, our staffing's pretty much set for the year, so if, if we came into next year and we had significantly less students, that's something that we would need to talk about. Each student with the state funding sources and our operating referendum generates roughly $9,000, when it's all added together, all the different formulas. So the 100-student increase that we saw was almost $1 million in revenue. So that's, it depends on, you know, what we were to see, but that kind of gives you a frame of the dollars we're looking at, so.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Margaret, that's also why we make sure we include those monthly enrollment reports, because just like with any business, you know, you're looking at what is your revenue drivers. And of course, for us, it's our enrollment. And so I think the key thing is, that's a piece that we keep very close tabs on, and you're absolutely right. We have a number of open enrolled students and non-resident agreement students who come to the district, but that's a piece that, that's why we share that with you every month. The likelihood of someone of a radical turnaround is, is not likely. But if we start to see those things, you know, going the other direction, that's the reason that we have the fund balance, so that we're able to mitigate that in a pretty short order.
Thank you.
Excellent question. Other questions or comments? Amy?
I just was wondering a little bit more about the class fee for the electives.
Sure.
As a parent who's paid art fees and consumer education, what, I forget exactly what it's called these days.
Tax.
And, and shop fees, it's not called that either. But it sounds like a great thing, that, that we could eliminate that. But then you mentioned $80,000 was brought in, and to me, so I'm hearing that everybody would have the fee eliminated who's taking the class, which is good. But I'm still sort of amazed by that $80,000, that it really adds up that much. And just wanted to, wonder if you could comment on it a little bit?
Sure. I will say, it's a conservative estimate, of course. When I, when I really dig into the data, the, the total that we see, that $80,000 is the total that I see in what we call our resale revenue account across the district. The primary, the bulk of it is middle school and high school. For those class fees for the number of students, they've got multiple sections, and so it does add up faster, faster than you would probably think. Part of, part of my analysis, and we haven't, again, this is a proposed idea, so I haven't had a chance to meet individually with the principals. We've kind of talked about it conceptually as an administrative team, and didn't want to miss the opportunity to present it to the board. But part of that, part of my questions, and can we move forward with this, would be, is this total amount of revenue that you've brought in equivalent to the expenditures that you've been spending? So while they estimate the fees at the beginning of the year, that doesn't necessarily equate to the number of expenditures that they had. It's been my, my hopes that it always would, because, but there's always things in the, in the planning process that don't necessarily follow through throughout the year. So the expenditures have already been in the budget, we're already paying for them, so that's, there's not an increase on the other side, that's already there, we're just reducing half of the equation. But I'm not 100% confident yet that the two sides equal 80,000, if that makes sense. So I, I put that number in there to be the most conservative, but I, I don't think it'll actually be quite that much, once we're looking at how much the expenditures really are, and the other pieces that might be playing into that number that I haven't gotten the full detail of yet. Does that make sense? It's a pretty technical response, sorry, but...
And Amy, I just, this, this idea came to be discussion, I mean, I know this is going to shock everybody, but based on discussion of our strategic plan. And if we think specifically about ensuring equitable opportunities and support for all career and college pathways, all of the things that you heard, whether that be family consumer science, technology, and educa, technology, education technol, or technology and engineering, excuse me, the technology and engineering department, you think about the art class, art classes, which are a lot about design thinking, in terms of those things. Those are all the kinds of skills that we saw on display at the Career Technical Education Fair a few weeks ago. We also know that there were two reports in the Star Tribune on Sunday, talking about the massive, and they're not saying some, they're talking about massive increase in some of these fields, that these courses could be a gateway for students to generate an interest. And if you think about it, equitable support for all career and college pathways, anything that we can reduce a barrier for students who do not have the means to be able to pay for it, yes, we offer scholarship opportunities and those kinds of things, but we all know that many students whose parents may be not able to afford it, students may not even attempt to sign up, because they're very aware of what is happening in their household economically, far more aware than I think a lot of us adults would give them credit for. So as we look at how do we operationalize the strategic plan with a reasonable fund balance, you know, we have an opportunity to look at how can we reduce those barriers specific to the career and college readiness kinds of hands-on courses that we talk about. And we, we feel it's something that we really need to look at, if we're going to be true to our mission and vision, and the short, the near-term priorities. So that's why we brought it to this point. Want to be very clear, this does not, at this point, talk about things like activities fees, or things like field trip fees. Those kinds of things would stay in place, you know, at this point. What we looked at with our first component is what, especially at the secondary, were those things that could prevent a student from possibly accessing one of these comprehensive courses that we have, that can lead directly into a skilled trade, or another area that we know, you know, is in great demand for jobs? And so that's our rationale behind it, and is, anytime I can share with you the thinking that we have behind a proposal that links to the strategic plan, I always like to do that for you, because it shows that on a daily basis, we're trying to live it out the best that we can as administrators. So I think the key thing is that while we'd all like to say, yes, if a student may be of lower socioeconomic means, there are ways for them to get to those courses, we also all know that there are many students, especially when you get to the high school, who won't even complete the paperwork to demonstrate that they are free to reduce lunch price students, which would be the, the system that would help us identify them, because they're much more aware than I think many people want to admit. We know it, and it's our responsibility to bring that to you, so we can make sure that the district's living out your priorities, has, have been identified in the strategic plan.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Ellen?
So first, a comment for Val, of how much I appreciate the format of the report, the narrative with the PowerPoints. I think that, I feel like we've been asking more questions, and I think it's because you've enabled us to understand enough, that we feel like we can get into the nitty-gritty. So I really appreciate that. I had a question under the expenditures on the narrative. You talked, it says, we've seen a significant amount of position turnover, and I just wondered about that, if there's a, you know, we have a sense of why?
There's lots of reasons. New job opportunities, positions just not working out, things like that. We've had... We've had a couple positions where we've had custodians that have moved into a head custodian, which creates a vacancy, so just lots of shuffling for various reasons. There's definitely not one I could pin down, there's, there's multiple, but that's just kind of created some scenarios where people are working overtime and helping out and kind of covering all the bases, so.
And I think it's also fair to say that, you know, one of the reasons for potentially some of the additional turnovers, if you think about it, we added a significant number of positions this year within the system to work with SEVSEC, you know, and so even though it's a flow-through piece, that certainly, that, that turnover equates in this particular place as well, but we've seen it in a number of different places, including the custodial ranks, as Val has mentioned.
Yep.
Did you just have one question? Okay. Is there any board members who have other questions?
I had one question. Again, the narrative is just so incredibly helpful. I was really pleased to see that you went after the, the federal source, you know, our, our sourcing at the federal level, because, you know, everything indicates that there will be really some significant cuts to those dollars. So I really appreciate us getting ahead of that, so that we can see, because we know, just like enrollment and some of these other pieces, you know, that, that fund balance is very precarious and can go away quickly, so I was really happy to see that. So did you take it out of any specific title programs, or did you just an overall percent decrease to come up with that?
I took a little bit out of each one. So we have Title I, Title II, Title III, and our federal special ed are our primary federal programs that we operate, so I did just a slight reduction out of each one.
Okay, good, thank you very much. Okay, that was my only question, other than thank you very much for the presentation.
All right.
As usual, Val does such a great job of giving us immense detail, and I appreciate the second revised budgets that she's sharing with you as well. You know, we've had a few variables this year that we've not worked with in the past, and I think it just demonstrates the stewardship and the responsibility that we have to come back and tell you, hey, we have some updated estimates here, so.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to the District Educational Program Advisory Committee update, previously affectionately known as DPAC, and Dr. Hillman is here to present the update.
Well, as you may know from over the years, normally it's one of our community members from DPAC who presents the annual report, and there's an intentional reason, I don't stand at this podium very often anymore, but there's an intentional reason why I'm standing here, and that's simply to, to indicate that we are evolving as DPAC, and you'll see in the lower right corner, this handy-dandy new little logo that I've made for DPAC with some free online thing, that's, we have now renamed DPAC Northfield Forward, and it's, the set, the tagline is the District Advisory Committee, because really, if you think about it, that's what DPAC has served over, over the years, it's been a community advisory committee. I'm going to explain why DPAC is becoming Northfield Forward as we move forward, and just the shift and the evolution of this very, very important group of people and how they serve the district. So first of all, we want to make sure that we always come back to the why, and the strategic plan, unlike our previous strategic plan, which was also very good, our new plan provides more direction to buildings for their school improvement plans than our previous approach to strategic planning did. Neither one is right or wrong, it's just that as we've, we've had an appetite to move forward with some more unification of vision and work across the district, and so as we've talked about with the new strategic vision and the new ongoing priorities and the new near-term priorities, we've given schools real direction on where, how they should align their annual goals. And the key thing is that DPAC used to write a number of goals each year, seven, eight, nine goals that would be written each year. We think that there's a different way that this group could spend their time. So the district's, the need for any committee to evolve over a period of time, we heard in a board report tonight about the District Staff Development Committee potentially merging with the District Technology Steering Committee, again, that evolution of, of how committee work and how feedback should be entertained by the district. We're also really looking at repositioning Northfield Forward as the district's critical friend. And when I think of that critical friend, those people are so important to us as we grow as people, and as we grow as an organization, in terms of someone who we know cares about us, yet is willing to give us the straight skinny, so to speak, in terms of areas that we're doing well, and areas where we potentially could be looking for improvement. So we're looking to reposition Northfield Forward as the district's critical friend. They will be providing feedback, the slaps on the back when we do things well, as well as talking about what's next for us in terms of that continuous improvement mindset and journey that we really are committed to. Also trying to emphasize a direct alignment between the building goals and the strategic plan, I'll show you a graphic in just a moment that will explain that. And also, we've had, actually, one of the things that we've heard over and over again is, what is DPAC? And so trying to reboot it in terms of having a different identity to articulate that we are looking at this just a little bit differently, and we had a group who did a visioning activity with this, and we did a voice vote agreeing to Northfield Forward. Again, that goes after continuous improvement, right, Northfield Forward? So another piece is looking at, to expand the membership and, and ensuring really good representation of a broad group of stakeholders. And so while we already have a, a pretty good range, we're just going to go back and take a look at that, make sure that we have the right number of, of district staff members, the right number of community and parent members, along with our student representatives who come to us from the District Youth Council, we really want to make sure that we're getting as many voices at the table as possible, yet still be able to be run efficiently. We would reduce the number of meetings that we typically had six meetings a year, reduce it to four meetings a year with a very detailed standard agenda, so that people know when they show up, the couple of hours that they're going to be there are going to be very well-used, it's going to be focused. And then for the people who are running the committee, they don't need to think about, oh, it's the October meeting, what, what should we look at this year? There's a detailed standard committee, and frankly, we're following the template that Val Murdestorff and I used to reboot the District Finance Committee, which has been very, very successful in terms of providing the district excellent feedback over the past couple of years. A couple of items that will be on the detailed standard agenda, there's more in your packet in terms of the narrative that I provided, something we call signature results presentations. So when a professional learning community has some outstanding results, they really, they really nail that they had a great goal, they achieved that goal, maybe it was even a stretch goal, that we would have the opportunity for them to come and have a public way to celebrate their success. And by sharing with Northfield Forward what they did to achieve those goals, and how could we potentially leverage those in terms of replicating to the best of our ability across the district. Using Northfield Forward to provide us some feedback on our evidence of practice documents, remember the evidence of practice document is what every PLC does in order to show their growth or to show their progress. And while Mary Hansen dutifully reviews every single one of those, you know, that's, you know, Mary and the building principals who are looking at it, and if we have some other folks who can potentially take a look at those and provide us just summative feedback on that, or formative feedback, depending on the time of year, we think that that would be very helpful as we continue to develop our PLCs to be even better. And then, of course, as you know, this group has the responsibility of being the legislatively required group that takes a look at the world's best workforce report. So this is the graphic of how I look, and I really believe that we look at a foundation going up model. We often hear of top-down planning or bottom-up planning, and, and what I like to look at here is that the base of the district is the strategic planning and priorities, that you have set that, you are the elected officials, you're telling us, this is where we're starting and this is where we're going. That should inform the school improvement plans, right? And the school improvement plans that will start to see a major difference is that we actually have all of our school improvement plans for next year scheduled, and you will have the first presentation of a school improvement plan by Northfield Middle School, and there's one other in, in July. I think we've got the middle school, and there's one other, I can't remember exactly right now who else is presenting in July, but we actually have two school improvement plans being presented to you and the board in, in July, so that when teachers come back during August workshop week, the school improvement plans have been presented, and we're using every one of the hundred and eighty-seven contracted days through the year to chase that, to make sure that we're going after success in our school improvement plan. We, we struggled, and there's a whole bunch of reasons why that happened, which I won't get into here, why we often had school improvement plans being approved in December, it goes back to the availability of MCA data years ago, but we feel very, in fact, the committee's concern was, could the schools get their school improvement plans done in time? And without question, the principal said, oh, we'll be ready to go, because they want to use every single day of the year with a clear school improvement plan as well. And then, of course, we know that the professional learning community is where the magic happens, and so what we really want to do is make sure that those professional learning community goals are informed by the school improvement plans, which are informed by the strategic plan priorities. And I love this stair-step analogy, because we're continuing to build that, and where the work actually happens is at the professional learning community level, and it's those folks who are the individuals who are working diligently and collaboratively for kids that are using those other two pieces as the information that they need to create their goals. And then our professional learning community results should also, as we continue to refine our strategic plan, be able to reinforce those goals as well. And again, we're looking totally for continuous improvement. So in summary, what we're looking at doing is just taking that next step, evolving DPAC into Northfield Forward, we're looking at just modifying the structure and the way that we do business within that committee, and looking very much to use the summertime to be able to get our school improvement plans presented to you and approved, so that we are moving ahead and using every single possible day of the school year to be able to achieve results on those plans. So with that, I would certainly stand for any questions, but I just try to give you a high-level summary of how we're shifting.
Okay, excellent. Board members' questions, comments? Noel?
I'd like to report. We got expanded membership and greater visibility, and that should be serving as the next one, too. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Noel.
Other questions, comments? Ellen?
I just have a comment. So having watched this evolve, what I really appreciated about it is that the plan came out of different ideas from the group, and it was really masterful how that, how the group dynamics were engineered so that people could give input, and then this plan came back to the group, and, and then it ended up staying pretty much the same between the two meetings, because as, as Dr. Hillman mentioned, the, the biggest concern that came up was just, could this happen in terms of timing? And when the answer was yes, it seemed like, well, everybody was really bought into trying this, and with a lot of enthusiasm, actually. So I just think it was really well-done in terms of getting the T, the current team membership to look at the, a new design and get bought into it and provide the input, so.
Excellent, thank you for that reflection. Other questions or comments?
I think I, you know, it was great, Ellen, that you could share how the process evolved, but, but what I really like about it is you're really harnessing all the energy and the knowledge and the experience and the skillset of everyone in that room in a way that I don't think we have been allowed to, to have done before, so I think it's really excellent, exciting, very exciting.
And just, it's the next step of the evolution, and all groups, successful or unsuccessful, this has been a very successful group over the years, it's the group that has generated the ideas that brought forth PLCs and transformational technology, as well as a number of other things that were really well-vetted and then not chosen to go forward with. So this is just the, the next level of this committee, and we're really thrilled to, to give it the opportunity to have that kind of energy and the kind of impact that it has had before, but it'll be in just a slightly different, and I think even more impactful way than it's been to this point.
Excellent, thank you. So Dr. Hillman, are you going to stay up there?
I'm going to come back over there.
Do the next presentation, or stay up there? Okay, thank you for that presentation. Next on our discussion report would be Positive Attention and Learning Support, PALS program update, also provided by Dr. Hillman.
And so what I just want to do is really kind of formalize a couple of things that we've talked about over the past couple of months. When we brought you the Social Emotional Learning Curriculum Report in early April, our Positive Attention and Learning Specialists were here to share with you their work on a daily basis. Of course, that was a new position this year. We talked with you and really let you know about how important those positions are going to be in terms of the implementation of social emotional learning, and you heard a number of the, what I would call just-in-time teaching techniques that people are able to do, that our PALS are able to do, to help a student recover, or to look at their behavior, to, to learn how to fix their behavior, and then be reinserted back into the learning situation so that learning continues to happen. And they've not only learned the behavioral skills that they need to have, but now they're also right back at the academic piece, which we want to limit that removal from the academic environment as much as possible, and the PALS, they have been able to do that, and I can tell you, I've seen nearly every trip to the buildings, I can tell you that I've seen that happen. When we go back and look at how you approved the PALS positions last year, they were approved at, for one year on a trial basis, and so I'm not going to take, simply to say that you heard a much more detailed report about what they do on a daily basis in early April, I provided that same report back to you, so that it could just activate your prior knowledge, and then simply just asking you to, to consider formally approving those positions moving forward in an ongoing basis, I'll ask you to approve that at the June 12th board meeting. So just wanted to reactivate the report that had happened in April, call attention back that it was one year ago that we had approved these positions on a trial basis. I think it's fair to say they've been, they've been very successful, I think even more successful than we initially anticipated they could be, and they play an important role moving ahead with our social emotional learning curriculum. So again, simply to reactivate what we had talked about in April, would be happy to answer any questions about our PALS positions. Again, not asking for any action this evening, but we'll be asking for the action at the June board meeting.
Perfect, okay.
Appreciate the update, I think it was really excellent. Board members had the opportunity to, to hear from Peg and Adam and Melissa, you know, of the work that was being done, and again, I think exceeded all of our expectations. And it was actually the meeting a year ago that we approved this, so I think it has clearly exceeded our expectations, and with the introduction of SEL, I think it's just the framework that, that they need to keep doing really, really good things for our students.
Okay, so if anyone in the, be prior to the June 12th board meeting, if you have any specific questions, you can get to Dr. Hillman for those, otherwise we will look at it for an item for individual action. Okay, our fourth, also, Dr. Hillman, Administrative Services update.
Yep, 3A. It was in the table file, it's the music piece.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem.
I'm sorry, I thought that was the fifth item, so I apologize for that.
No, and we're going to do both of them, so thank you for, so this is a piece that I included in your table file this evening, and again, not something we're asking for any action on this evening, but also going back to a year ago, if you recall, administration came to and, and made some recommendations about basically reallocating existing, not reducing any FTE within our secondary music programming, but reallocating four-tenths FTE between music programming based upon enrollment. And at that time, what we had said to you is that we had been seeing our middle school band numbers decreasing over a period of years, while our orchestra numbers had been going up. So again, being good stewards of our dollars, we were looking at how can we make sure that we place those FTE in a place that can serve the most students, but we also had said to you that should we see an increase in the numbers for our middle school band program, we would of course come back and make a recommendation to increase FTE in those particular areas. And so what I've provided for you in the table file is just simply an updated chart to what you had seen last year with the year, and then the number of students in band and the number of students in orchestra. You'll see that we continue to have a growth in our middle school orchestra program, and what you'll see is the registrations for next year's band are significantly up in terms of, up quite a bit, thirty-five students, based on my count there over one year. And what's interesting about that is that our current eighth grade class is a very large class exiting, and we have a sixth grade class that's coming in that isn't as large as the eighth grade leaving, so there's even a greater piece because of the fact that the middle school will have fewer students next year, and yet they are increasing the number of students in the band program by a significant amount. And at this point, when we look at that, talking with Greg Gellino and, and his work at the middle school, what we're believing is that it's appropriate for next year to increase the FTE for the middle school band by zero point two FTE. It will be up to the administration of how they structure that, but I think that the key thing is that we see, we're, we're inching back toward those numbers of the 2012, 13, 13, 14, and yet we still see that maintenance of those numbers in orchestra, and so just making sure that we're providing an appropriate amount of FTE to serve those students. So again, not asking for any approval this evening, I'm just simply sharing, following through on what we said we would do a year ago, which is that there was a change in terms of the number of students participating, that we would come and ask you for an increase to that particular area. Again, a small increase, and some of you might be wondering, well, how would we do such a small increase? There's a couple of strategies that we can use, we can either look at assigning, you know, offering an overload, you know, for a teacher to teach above and beyond what the contractual limit is, and one of the things that we are very fortunate in Northfield is that we do know that there are a number of licensed music teachers who, from time to time, do want to do part-time work for us. So even though it's a very small amount of FTE there, I'm, I'm told there's actually the potential for someone to take that, and there's a, like I said, there's a couple of different ways that they're looking at structuring it that would make it more attractive for an outside individual to apply for that, but that's just the- for that. But that's just the piece in terms of how we're looking at adding that point to FTE next year for middle school band. So again, we'll come back and ask you for that formally in June.
Okay. Excellent. Questions, board members have on the discussion report. Amy?
So that would be brand-new hours and not just a switch back?
Correct. It will be an additional. So last year, we reallocated hours between those two, between two program areas within the secondary music staffing allotment. And in this case, what we're seeing is a true, because there was a shuffle of numbers from, between different programs. And again, trying to be good stewards and making sure that we're using the public's money in the best way. We had reallocated some of that. In this case, because of the true increase, it's an add, not a reallocation.
I just realized it wasn't on. So does that mean there would be another class of orchestra added, or?
Not of orchestra. This would be a band.
Okay. So would there be another, how does that work?
What it most likely, it most likely will end up being is additional time for lessons.
Individual lessons?
Correct.
Okay.
Margaret. How close are we to room capacity in that band room?
I believe that we are, I have not heard a concern about that. Because remember, you're talking about a total of 235 students between three different grade levels.
Right.
So in terms of, it's not all 200 students being in there at one time.
Right.
You know, in terms of the band room at the middle school, if you've been there, it is, it is housed far more students in the past than it would be projected for next year.
Yeah. But it's never, it was never built to house them all. I was just wondering.
Correct.
We're not close to capacity.
I've not let anyone sharing that they have a concern about capacity at this point.
And the rise in orchestra students does not warrant additional FTE. How are we doing in vocal music?
So in vocal music, in terms of, my understanding is we're just under 100 students.
Okay.
But what we also recall there is that not only does that vocal music teacher do, and I should take that back, I don't think that number includes sixth grade, 96. I just don't believe that that doesn't include the sixth grade registration yet. And I can have a number for you at the June board meeting. However, remember, the vocal music folks also teach, they've taught a music and technology class before, some general music. So there's been some other things that have been, it's, our vocal music's a little bit of a different model than what our instrumental music is.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
I have another question.
Yes, Amy?
So I think I just need a little more history because these numbers make me ask questions. So, so the very first year listed, 2012, 2013, there was a total between band and orchestra of 386 students. And then next year, there's a projected total of 359. So actually fewer students between them. So what's happened in the last five years with staffing?
So for many years, what we had is a shared 1.0 FTE between orchestra at the middle school and high school. So a person taught roughly six tenths, if I'm remembering correctly, at the high school and then had a four-tenths piece at the middle school. So one orchestra between two buildings. And now I'm trying, and then we have an elementary orchestra teacher who teaches the sections at all three elementary buildings, starting in fourth grade. Band had had, had more than 1.0 FTE for quite some time, and it had been slightly reduced in terms of to one full-time piece, well, one and change because it was about 1.2, 1.4. And then as we saw the change in numbers between band and orchestra, we looked at having to just make sure that there was an appropriate amount of FTE for both, to be able to handle both sets of, both ensembles. And the determination last year was to go to 1.0 full FTE at the high school for orchestra and 1.0 FTE at the middle school for orchestra, which we had not had in the past. And then 1.0 FTE for band at both the middle school and high school. So that was the piece that we went to last year, making sure that there was an equitable amount of FTE for all the programming areas. And there's, of course, different strategies in each musical ensemble area. And then this year, again, as we've seen a 35 student increase, we had said we'd come back and talk about an increase, and that's what we're doing. So it's been, it has been varied over the years in terms of the amount of music FTE. And last year, I think we looked at this kind of a reset piece in terms of looking at, making sure that we had the appropriate people in the spots for that, or the appropriate amount of FTE in each spot for that, and then saying, we're gonna use this as our baseline and move forward.
Okay. So you just threw out a lot of numbers really quickly. But did I hear that back in like 2012, 2013, there was like, between the middle school and the high school, there was one band teacher and one orchestra teacher?
No. So at that time, there would have been more than two band teachers between, two plus between the two disciplines, but there would have been one orchestra teacher.
Okay. And so, and then it's since been increased?
Since, since that point, we've increased the orchestra FTE and have done some slight modifications with the band FTE.
Okay. And, and still with, and I think our music program all around is one, is such a strong program, and I want to keep it that way. I'm just trying to understand how the staffing has changed through the years. But now it's like, even though we increased the staff before, it's, we still need to increase it a little bit more.
That's correct.
That's what I'm hearing. Okay.
Correct. Thank you. Good question. And I can include that study of the FTE in the, in the June report as well.
Any other questions or comments?
I had one question.
Yep.
And I think you, you touched on it, and that was the impact on lessons. And it appears that this point to FTE will take care of, they're not really individual lessons, they're usually group lessons.
More group lessons, yes.
But that will accommodate the current lesson structure.
Yes, that is my understanding from Mr. Gellino.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
So we will-
Rolling right along.
Yes, we'll go on then to item number four, which is the Administrative Services update. Dr. Hillman?
So, a year ago as well, in June, we were staring and looking after Val's presentation last year. We were looking and projecting to have some reductions for the 2017, 18 school year. And at that point, when I had been hired as the superintendent, one of the things that we were looking at was saying, if we had replaced my previous position, the Director of Administrative Services position, yet we were looking at some pretty significant budget reductions, we are concerned about trying to recruit someone that to then, which were a position could possibly be reduced in terms of the process that we would have gone through for budget reductions. So that's what started the process. There have been a couple of other pieces, decisions that have been made that I want to share with you, and you're gonna, it's not convoluted, but there's a couple of steps you have to follow with me here. So the first started with the budget reduction process, or the anticipated budget reduction process. Then when we added the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative, and we looked at adding some support within the district because of the fact that we were going to be the fiscal host, we added two pieces. We expanded our student information system position to full year, which frankly is something we had wanted to do for some time, because student information is a year-round component. It's a piece, we've got students coming in and registering all the time. There's some specific things to special education, other things where having that, our data person, our student information data person available all year round, we felt was really important. And it became critical when we added the SEVSEC to our Northfield Schools family. The second piece is when we increased by a pretty significant number, 50 or so positions, more like 80, right? So around 80 positions, obviously, being able to serve those people in terms of the kinds of things that a district office needs to serve folks and benefits and those kinds of things became really important. And so we did add a position that is shared between the Human Resources and the Finance Office and really is, is what's called a Benefit Specialist Position. And so that is a piece that is going on this year. The third component is the fact that we had this grant in January, if you remember, from HCI, to expand our District Assessment Coordinator position from part-time to full-time. And already in the first four months that we've had, that we have seen some tremendous benefit in terms of our District Assessment Coordinator being able to work on a number of different pieces of information and research that can help us understand the district better and to be able to be smarter about our continuous improvement journey. So whether that be looking with us about a demographic piece, or whether it be looking at a particular way that a particular school or grade level has scored on a particular suite of assessments, having that data in Assessment Coordinator full-time is really, we're already seeing the tremendous benefit of giving us the information that we need to make really savvy instructional decisions. And so those three pieces together, and then in addition, the fact that we did not replace my former position, we've also ensured that we've empowered each of our district services leadership team members, our Directors of Finance, our Director of HR, our Director of Technology Services, Buildings and Grounds, Child Nutrition, to continue to take on another level of leadership. So, for example, having the Benefit Specialist Position has taken away some of the day-to-day duties that both Molly and Val would have been doing in the past and allowed them to focus on, with me, on organizational development, kinds of things in terms of that team model. The Director of Administrative Services position was the right one at the right time for the right reasons. But as we move forward, I am proposing to you that we continue on with the structure that we've had during my first year as superintendent that has served me very well. I have felt very supported by our leadership team, and I feel that we are even providing better service than ever to the people who work for Northfield Public Schools because of some of the additional access that people have to a District Assessment Coordinator, to a Student Information System Specialist, you know, and to a Benefit Specialist. You've seen the great success story of our self-funded health insurance and our self-funded dental insurance. And when we have a Benefit Specialist who's working on those things every day and really has the knowledge of how that's working, you're seeing how we grew a $4 million fund balance in that particular area over time. But it takes constant maintenance in those kinds of pieces and the ability for our employees to know that if they have an issue with their benefits, they have someone dedicated to help them within the district, and that gives them great confidence. So as we looked at the savings that we had had from the position, as we looked at the fact that we did not need to make the budget reductions as we had anticipated due to the increase in student enrollment, what I've included in your packet is an analysis that by, not adding, but continuing these things that we had this year, either through grant or through shared revenue from, or shared, shared with the rest of the SEVSEC districts, because of course, we bill them back for those couple of positions that were specifically hired for SEVSEC support. Even with that, we would still come out ahead $32,000 over what we had spent previously. So the fact is, we can have continued several positions that have become very essential to how the district is operating. They've been essential in supporting me as the superintendent, so I can make sure I'm focusing on the organizational goals like strategic plan and master facilities plan and making sure that as we move ahead with SEL curriculum, as we move ahead with our literacy team and adoption 2018, 19, allowing me as a superintendent to also provide support for teaching and learning and for special education in a way that I feel very comfortable doing. So this was a piece that I remember when we looked at eliminating it last year. Some board members asked me, making sure that I felt that I had enough support as the district's leader to continue moving forward. And what I'm here to tell you tonight is that I believe I've had really great support from the people on our team. I feel that we're all invested toward that same common goal that are set forth in the strategic plan. And the model that we have this year, even when we remove SEVSEC from the equation, we are going to be providing even better support to people within the district. So my recommendation is that we move forward with these positions that were either created as a result of joining SEVSEC or through a grant process and continuing down that road while still realizing some pretty significant savings over the previous administrative structure.
Great. Excellent. Questions, comments, board members have? Ellen?
I have a question. And first, I guess I'll have a reflection and then a question. And the reflection is just that I guess I have seen the sort of leadership model that you've had, this shared leadership model, really work in action. And I feel like it's provided some flexibility with, even with circumstances where we didn't necessarily anticipate. You've got staff that can jump into different roles and know that you've got this strong, deep leadership. So I think, I guess I've really appreciated that.
Thank you.
So my question is just a point of clarification. The District Assessment Coordinator, which I'm very excited that we've had this funding for, if I'm understanding correctly, is when the HCI funding runs out, what you're proposing is that we continue that position at the full-time level and that, so this 0.5 FTE instructional coach, so I got a little confused just about the language, but that's essentially what we mean, right?
Correct. Because if, it's a domino effect. So when we created that full-time District Assessment Coordinator position, that particular person, Hope Langston, had also had a part-time instructional coaching position. So we released her from her instructional coaching position duties to take on the full-time District Assessment Coordinator. And I could give you a full report on the history of the District Assessment Coordinator. Because if you remember, years ago, it's been partnered with other positions. And then when it was partnered with other teaching positions, there's actually been some time in the summer and some other kinds of things that made the, it was not as simple to look at the position, oh, we have a district assessment. It was added on to other positions over the years. What we're proposing is makes it free and clear that it is a, be it administrative position for more than just the school year, and, but in order to, what we actually have to fund is not the, any kind of increase for that person, it's the ongoing piece of that instructional coach. And actually, this is something I've been talking about, the number of people with Erin and I just actually had this conversation today. We're all in favor of using grant money, and that's a great thing, right? Grant money's wonderful. But when I really think about what a grant is intended for organizations is to be able to, without touching their general fund budget, to be able to try and approach and see, does this work or does it not, or collect data, does it work, does it not work? And then eventually, having to make a determination, is this important enough to where we're going to actually fund it from the district's general fund? You've seen other circumstances outside of our organization where you'll see organizations that have what I will call chaste grants. And I'm not ever sure what their mission or vision is, because it's whatever the latest grants are is where they're going after. We have a very clear vision. We have a very clear mission. We have very clear priorities. And as we move forward, if there's something that we've had grant funding for a period of time that is meaningful and has provided great service to students and we think it's worth ongoing, then I think it's our job as the administrative team to say to you, yes, this is something that's important, it's ongoing, and we're going to make sure that it's funded from within the district. What I never want to see is programming that has been really, really good for people, but totally dependent upon getting the grant. And if it's totally dependent upon getting the grant and that grant money goes away and we don't have a plan for how we're going to fund it, we have a real problem. You know, and so that's going to be something I'm going to insist with other grants as we move forward. This is just the first example of the kind of questions we're going to ask. It, it has worked very well. We thank Zach and HCI for giving us the jumpstart on it. And we now know, because guess what, that money that was given to us for this project is going to come back to the district in some other way, and another thing that we have an opportunity to pile in or try. So long answer to the short question is that yes, it's the halftime instructional coach that we have to backfill. I'm sorry, I just think that detail is important in terms of that.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Noel?
I like the analysis. It seemed like everybody liked it. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? I would just dovetail on what Noel said. I think that, you know, within sort of the back office between benefits and human resources, I think we are extremely lean. And I think by adding this position, we are probably still doing a whole lot with a very few people. So that's-
We're continuing it. We're not adding it. I don't want to make you think we're adding stuff here.
Well, it was a SEVSEC, and now it's coming back to the district. So you're right, it's not adding, but it's just allowing. And I think that the point of being better able to service our employees with their benefits, I think, is really key. So it's a really good proposal. Excellent. And then no other comments or questions? We'll move on to, actually, that's our last item for discussion or report. So we will move on to items for individual action. This is a follow-up to the presentation that was done at the May 8th School Board Meeting by Director, Special Education Director Cheryl Hall. So we would be looking at the motion for that piece. Because it's an item for individual action, we'll entertain the motion prior to discussion or comment. So is there a motion to approve an additional 1.0 FTE resource room teacher at Sibley, 0.5 FTE resource room teacher at Bridgewater, and a 0.5 FTE resource room teacher at Greenville Park for the 2017, 18 school year at a maximum cost of $175,663? Moved by Margaret. Is there a second? Second by Ellen. So questions or comments? Director Hall is here available as well for questions or comments.
I think I'd just like to frame that as we talked with you a year ago, one of the pieces that had come out of MDE, Cheryl had shared the last time, I'm sure, was the workload analysis tool. And it's the workload analysis tool that we're required to use to be looking at the, how we service students in different areas of disabilities that generate what our staffing needs to be. And this is one of those cases where we're asking you for approval, but yet if we didn't approve these, there's a reasonable chance, a more than reasonable chance, we'd be out of compliance at the department level. Am I saying that correctly, Cheryl?
Yes, you are.
Okay. So are there any questions or comments? Ellen?
So I just had a point of clarification. So I appreciated having the options laid out as to what requires funding. But when you, you gave us sort of all the different moving pieces in such a thorough report for us to consider, the ECL- pieces in such a thorough report for us to consider, the ECSE Longfellow, you talked about having to have off-site leased space, are some of those things going forward as well?
We're still investigating those options. We have someone working on that to identify some potential leased spaces. As we add some of these positions, we need actually places for teachers and students as well.
We have chased a few different things down the road, and they have not panned out to this point. We've looked at a couple of different sites so far of potential leased space, neither of which worked out. We continue, we're trying to avoid having to talk about the portable kind of piece, but that's still on our radar as well in terms of, again, with that at Longfellow, that would be more for relocating some office space, so that the current office space could be used as instructional space. We continue down that road in terms of looking at, and then also, I know Cheryl, you're also looking at placing some early childhood special education students in community preschool components, which is another way that we can provide those services.
Right, exactly. Other questions or comments? As you know, I wasn't at the last board meeting, but I had the chance to watch the replay of the board meeting, and I particularly appreciate all the great questions that board members have. And it's just so clear how complex and challenging special education is, and we are incredibly fortunate to have you in the leadership position to make this all work, because it is really challenging, so.
Thank you.
I fully plan to intend to support the motion, and just thank you for all your work. So if there's any, there aren't any other questions or comments, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your support.
Okay, our next item for individual action, in your packet, you have the proposal for the full-time substitute teacher update. Director of Human Resources Molly Wieselman is here to ask questions as well as fill in some information. Prior to that, since it is an item for individual action, if we could entertain a motion to approve two full-time substitute teachers for the 2017-18 school year at a cost of $25 per hour per substitute teacher. Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Ellen. Okay, again, here's Molly Wieselman, Director of Human Resources, to present the update.
So thanks for letting me come and explain this to you. It seems like just yesterday, we were talking about implementing these positions, and that was in December, so I think overall, these positions have worked extremely well. And surveying our hiring administrators and program directors, it has saved the buildings a lot of hard days with shortage of substitutes. So the majority of the days, 59% to 64% of our, the teachers', full-time substitute teacher days were spent subbing for teachers, actual classroom teachers. If we didn't have any last-minute teacher absences, we didn't want them just to be doing, you know, nothing, so then we slot them into vacant educational assistant positions. And that was, 28% of their time was spent doing that. On days, which was very few and far between, but we did have days where there was no EA or teacher vacancies. And so then we had asked our building administrators if you have areas of high concern or high need, larger class sizes, and we did hear back from several, like the middle school EL program is always in need of extra pair of hands, and so then they are slotted into areas where they can just assist teachers that are in the classroom. And then 4% to 5% of the time was either sick time or snow days, we had a couple of snow days. So, but we did really see a significant decrease in the number of unfilled absences we have. And it doesn't seem like it necessarily when you look at the 133 unfilled first semester, when we didn't have these positions, to the 136, which is actually an increase in unfilled absences second semester, but when you look at the actual instances of absences, first semester was 2,175, and those are just instances of absences. That's not like full days, there wasn't that many full-day absences. That was like, it might be an hour here, an hour there, half a day. And then second semester, we had, to date as of 5/18 of 2017, we had 3,245 instances of absences. So when you look at that, you know, over 1,000 more instances of absences, and we only had three more unfilled, I think that's pretty significant, telling us that these positions have been very useful in the building. And the other feedback that we had gotten was, not only were the positions extremely useful for the building administrators and the program directors, but the two individuals that were hired into these positions were very solid substitutes. One of them happens to have an actual MDE teaching license, and she's extremely well-thought-of in all the buildings, even the secondary. And then the other one has a short-call substitute license, which was the minimum that we required when we posted the positions. And she also has Spanish language skills that she brings to the table, which have been very useful in many of our Spanish immersion classrooms and our EL programs. So I don't know if you have any specific questions that I can answer for any of you?
So are there any specific questions or comments for Molly?
Amy?
I'm excited to hear about the success of this idea. I'm just wondering if you can comment on the different types of absences across the different schools, like the elementary school or the middle school, the high school? And were these teachers mostly focused on the elementary schools? Or just whatever you...
What we did was, we assessed their overall background and the skill set that they each brought to the table. And the one having an elementary education license, we place her more frequently at the elementary level. And then our individual that doesn't really have an actual MDE teaching license but has the short-call substitute license, she just has one of those personalities, that she's just comfortable anywhere she goes, and we do tend to place her more in the Spanish classrooms when we have vacancies or at the secondary level, but she does very well, they both do very well anywhere. So we, and we always try to fill our elementary education classrooms first, because they don't have the option to have teachers on prep filling in for absent teachers like they do at the secondary level. And that's contractual in the teacher agreement, that, you know, they can sub for another teacher and get a different rate of pay. So they have that option at the secondary level, but they do not, they can't easily do that at the elementary classroom, so we do try to fill, slot those in first. So we do, kind of, we did kind of come up with a process on how we assign them. And then we did get some feedback from a couple of different programs that if we slotted them into an EA position, and, you know, right away at like 7:30, and then also at 8:45, one of our teachers gets really sick and has to go home last minute, then we move the substitute teacher from the EA position to a teaching position, because that's always our first priority is to cover those classrooms. But moving them from certain programs without notifying that program director or coordinator sometimes left our programs in, you know, where we were out of ratio in those programs that require that. So we got that feedback, and so now we have a little bit different process on how we do that. And so we kind of fine-tuned the process as we went along. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. That was very interesting. So then, it looks like these were very well utilized. I'm assuming from what you said that the unfilled teacher absences were more in the, like the middle school and the high school, just because of how you prioritize things?
Yep.
And then my question, looking for the future, is two of these positions enough?
Sometimes no, and sometimes yes, because when you look at the number, the, let's see, it was only 3% to 9% of days that we didn't have either an EA or a teacher. I mean, we could probably many times during the year use a third one, but I don't know that we would necessarily, right now, I can't say that I could advocate for a third position, but we haven't experienced the last two weeks of school here, and that is where our highest level of absences always take place. So that doesn't, that's not even reflected in this data, so we are continuing to collect that data through the end of the school year. And we'll, and we'll continue to collect the data in the fall, because we don't have data for the fall time, because we just implemented these, they started January 3rd, was their first day of work. So we'll continue to collect that data and study, you know, what we're doing where, and, you know, assess the need, if we need more or less, or, we don't want to hire more than what we need, but it really has proven to be a good strategy in our sub shortage.
And the substitute shortage is still alive and well. In fact, since we've implemented this, we've had at least two or three school districts contact us, because they were considering the same strategy, and they were trying to determine what the ratio would be for them. And so I think the key thing is, we're hearing again from across the state, that the, not only do we have a teacher shortage, right, we've heard about that, but obviously, when we have a teacher shortage, now we have a substitute shortage, because people who might have substituted before are being slotted into full-time, ongoing positions, and so it is the gift that keeps on giving.
And we did have three, but the third one was really only for the SubSec locations. So I'm only here advocating for the two that would continue to work for Northfield Public Schools, and Lynn Cremenga, I know, is looking at hiring the individual that was hired for their full-time sub next year as well.
Do the two substitute teachers enjoy the variety that they have?
They do, and it takes a special person for that as well. The one in particular loves being in the different buildings and loves going to the different programs, different grade levels, and she just kind of goes anywhere and goes with the flow, and it's worked out really pretty well, so.
Questions? Other questions or comments?
I just had a final comment. I mean, I think that the one reason, I mean, it worked really well, and I think it's really great to see that it worked well, but in part, it worked well because you really took the time and appreciate coming forward to the board with the proposal, but you had a really good sense of how it needed to play out, and it's obviously played out in that way. And, you know, it was just all the upfront planning, the ideation, and how the process was going to work, that I think you should be given due credit for that.
Thank you.
Because it's working really well, and I think for us to see these kind of numbers is really so interesting in terms of, again, the challenges that a building faces on a daily basis. Now, you and I talked this morning, so we could just briefly say, the positions will have to be, if this motion is approved, the positions would be reposted, but with the hope that the two currently in those positions would look to continue in those in that capacity.
Definitely, right. They were only hired through the end of this school year, so they would have to be reposted.
Okay, good.
Can I just add one more?
Yes, Dr. Hillman.
You mentioned before about HR's leadership in this, and I want to emphasize that, because as we look at continuous improvement across all buildings and all departments, I just have to say that Molly and the Human Resources Department is at the forefront of continuous improvement, because they have an opportunity to review their practices very often, every time someone's hired, every time there's something that's implemented, they have a chance to review that. And what I've seen, our Human Resources Department, and this is a great example of it, when they look at something, they're not asking, was it good or bad? They're saying, was it good or bad, and what can we do to make it even better? And we've seen a number of different tweaks that happen just with this program to make sure that we're providing the best service to the buildings that possible. In order to do that, you have to have leadership in a department that is willing to consume their own data and to take a look at it, and then to say, how could we do this better? So I really appreciate Molly's leadership of our HR department in all areas, but this is a great microcosm of how they operate in terms of saying, how can we provide the best service to the district? So thank you, Molly, for your work on that.
Thank you.
We want to make sure we share that with folks here tonight.
Absolutely, excellent. Thank you, Molly. Okay, so since it's been a bit since that we had a motion and a second, is there, we will vote on the motion is to approve two full-time substitute teachers for the 2017-18 school year at a cost of $25 per hour per substitute teacher. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that is the last item for individual action, so we'll move on to the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file to be added to the consent grouping, as well as the overnight trips for the 17-18 school year. Is there a motion to approve, oh, I'm sorry, is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Margaret. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items for information, Dr. Hillman?
So with our items for individual information, what we have upcoming is we have in your packet the 2017-18 School Board Meeting schedule, so please get those on your calendars, and they're not all that different than they've been for some time, so spoiler alert. And then I think the other piece is for folks to remind themselves is that we have the Area Learning Center graduation coming up on Friday, June 2nd, that's 7:00 PM in the High School Auditorium. Last year was the first time they had it in the evening, if you recall, before it had been in the afternoons at the, over at Longfellow. Now, remember, it's in the High School Auditorium, 7 o'clock on the 2nd. And then High School Graduation on Sunday, June 4th, 2 o'clock at Memorial Field. And what we just want to make sure is that board members, we've got the graduation memo that includes the fact that you should meet at the High School Office at 1:30, in terms of, to be able to get there, and then classes, it gives you the rest of the directions. The class will start up to the field at 1:50, so we're going to also hope that we have the same kind of weather we had for the CTE fair that day, because we want that 70 degrees sunny with about a 6 mile an hour wind, that would be perfect. I would prefer it to be 68, but I know that other people wouldn't like that. So again, making sure that you get all those pieces that you need. If you need any help, Lori Christopherson is the person that can assist you with it, and we can as well. But looking forward to graduation and all those things that come with that day.
Well, so we have to talk about graduation. Have you written your speech yet?
I have my concept ready to go. I've been told that being, I thought about it, about a 90-minute oratory on the history of public. I've been told that's not a good idea. So we will have between two and two and a half minutes. As you know, I've been a commencement speaker before at Minnesota State University of Mankato, and so I'm looking at the theme of past, present, and future. That's my current working theme, and we'll have it neatly tied into a 90-second or maybe two and a half-minute total package.
Talk about spoiler alert. Wow.
Well, it's exciting. But I also get to give one at the ALC as well, so I've got multiple speeches I'm preparing.
And I think for those of us who know you so well, we're absolutely flabbergasted that it is not written already, right?
These things take time. You want to get them right.
We're looking forward to it. Your inaugural commencement address as superintendent.
No pressure now.
So that will be an exciting day, exciting day. Okay, so back to the mundane future meetings, we are going into our summer schedule, so already Monday, June 12th, we have our regular School Board Meeting, and then, again, not until Monday, July 10th, both at 7:00 PM in the High School Media Center. And as a reminder, immediately following adjournment, the board will go into closed session for negotiations, strategy meeting. I just had one other, welcome to Nick Garrett Hart from the Northfield News, who is here this evening, and was formerly at this time typically on the baseball or softball fields, writing sports, but he will be covering education in the short term, hopefully near term. And I just want to thank you, I know that you were invited to the journalism class that was this year for the yearbook, was a separate journalism class that produced the yearbook, and I know you took time out of your busy schedule to talk to the students about photography and journalism, and that was really awesome that you did that, so we appreciate that very much.
Well, I'm properly embarrassed now.
Not meant to embarrass you, only to compliment you, so. Okay, with that, I ask for a motion that we adjourn. Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.